Yeah, one of them had just got back on.
Sold those in 90 to the client chain.
I don't.
Bottom one of the time, but then no. Got my experience eventual and talks with employers in that couple of years ago, so probably live in Iowa.
What do you do on the way?
Well, always my base. Always go back and add to their dad was the, um, the, 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 he worked with some shit. He was a. He go. That little kid would have something. Section nine, but they go to his house. So I asked for a line.
Take your notes back here on.
Yeah.
It's property to do that.
I probably lived in Iowa.
But when he plays.
Yeah, where you want 50 years.
I haven't, I don't go. I haven't had anything.
My dad.
I mean, I, I get up. If I see the. They're just like, oh, you're. You sort of create. Every, every.
So. Martin is going to try to chime in here. I think it's done.
I'll let my, my first of Iowa was under a thousand people. Yes, uh.
What is the issue?
Paste the link from.
His, uh, his parents.
Addressable.
You want me to see if John is still here?
I got him.
His dad, Steve Gruber, had, uh, a place called Maple City, which was big in the area.
Oh, okay.
Or the turn.
Okay.
Harp it.
Sure, just, okay.
And cash out in the sixties. Made a ton of money. Bowling alley.
Was that Jack or the one with the dash up? Okay, Steve.
And then the theater and the. Didn't want to.
Film.
Tell people. I mean, but. State is the. Downly residential. We believe we get a lot of them. Couple summers and.
Problem is it's after six. So.
When was that?
Should still be able to, you should still be open, open in its things. No.
Fifty, fifty. My sister.
Sure the host.
All along Bill Carrington, they had it originally, stayed in the basement of that whole building on Main Street. And I wonder if they, he bought them now or they run, you know. Uh, check Bill Carrington. And around.
Like I said, it was nineteen ninety four to sixty five.
Oh, is that going to be the same?
Yeah.
Same link that was on the.
Yeah.
That's probably.
Yeah, that's.
Right when I. Yeah, you got transfers and trace, so I as you go.
No, you don't want to.
School year, kind of growing through my right by here. Right, she saw a trash up at twenty seven. My way to call it.
Now. I could get.
Five, what about? I only have paper called the Ambler Progress. I have just my own and then three years later about the ever like your. Years after that, watching the, I love our dispatch.
Reminds me of when I went to about three years ago, sitting in the city and the.
Son, he's trying.
Dance with games.
I like.
Yeah. There you go.
Baseball player. That one on TV. You remember what I'm talking about. Honestly, I didn't understand.
Not a newspaper. Now, I liked it. What do you want to work for?
I'm having Vandal forty niners.
I remember these are. For now.
And this grand.
These are with high school stadium.
College, uh, journalist. In the houses, A, C, R, just gonna. December starts.
One of my roommate from. Orange. Since both of them. There's me. Oh, that section just south of that with all the. Free throw.
That little down arrow.
Capital cities.
Next to the green check.
So this is.
Yeah.
Tell me if I.
Says it's recording.
Going out into the park at night.
Perfect.
Perfect to rumble.
See.
Great boy. One there.
Big old Italian and still sick.
Sound coming.
I would say guys and friends, they were all very, we're all going to be five.
Everyone.
They all did except for. Many assault charges.
I think there's only one.
Maybe John can help you over the phone.
Oh, it's current.
Is it booty?
It's, uh. And we got it up, but there's audio issues. So.
I've never been to a governor and he had the green cheese. You know that and a newsprint was actually green.
Spot, what's one on the front?
Like film.
You know, I forgot about that, but you're right.
Yeah, we had our own press.
They had the same problem as the.
Boy and.
Oh, really? What he's saying is that there's.
John had.
Rodney was not. Um.
Fell down.
So, and he said that creates a creating feedback.
Just call John. On newspapers, we're throwing up. Your high, in high school, newspaper was.
You can hear me talking.
You know.
But there's.
You know. Know that this.
I don't see anybody. So go down to more.
Prevents.
On that. Participants.
A bottle of water. Thought about it and it went on.
Yeah, why it doesn't.
There's only one person.
Yeah, it's totally different.
That's a chat, so click on the chat. Yeah.
So that's what he read.
Yeah, click that up. Show chat reviews, yes. Look at that. Yeah.
And then the.
Don't be curious.
There's eight on Zoom right now.
Why does it not show it on? Usually.
Last time there was any issues was down there. Look down there.
No, it, that's working. It's the Zoom.
They can hear me. There are eight people on Zoom that can hear us talking. Somebody on Zoom is not muted. We can't control what's happening on Zoom for some reason.
They can hear us talking. You can tell the person, everybody makes sure they're muted.
Well, usually we're having technical difficulties with Zoom.
Participants as the host.
So if anyone on Zoom is listening, can you please mute? Your, your microphones because we're getting feedback.
Yeah, yeah.
The worst thing that happened is if everybody, everybody log off and log back on.
I think we're okay. I don't know why you can't see the participants.
I don't either, because usually they pop up. Yeah, yeah. I only showed two.
So let's see your, what, um, hit view.
Over the phone line.
Do gallery. There you go.
I know, it's like twenty twenty.
Stuff. I see anyone that's not, okay, so see how he's not.
Those are so crazy.
Hit me.
No, that seemed like it's, uh. Years ago.
Yeah.
Everyone else, is everyone else.
Yeah, we have some.
Okay.
Lions Club District means.
You have to turn the TV on?
Okay.
Convention committee.
Everyone can leave here. Okay.
Turn the TV on?
Get to go back to here. Okay, at six eighteen, thank you for everyone's patience. I am calling the City of Iowa Planning Commission, uh, meeting to order and we are invited to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
And states of America and to the republic. And one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
And, um, for our roll call, I was just going to go a little out of order and introduce, we have two, um, new planning commissioners and so, um, with our roll call, I want to introduce, um, Commissioner Michael Bull and Commissioner Larry Caputo as our new members. Vice Chair Mark Gebhardt, Commissioner Palidi and, um, Amber Hoyska, Chairwoman, and we are, um, that should be our roll call. We have a full quorum. And, um, I also had some corrections to our agenda today. We will be pulling the H two item from the hearing and from discussion today. We have some, uh, correction to the recommended action on H one in order to state that the, um, recommended action is retaining, uh, pertaining to the Picnic Hill Improvement Project. And. I think. I have something else. I think what I need to do with those items is call for a motion to have those amendments made or. Are we proceeding or am I calling for that motion?
You can call for it.
You can call for approval of the agenda. I will add that item number H two that is being polled is being polled for additional evaluation due to some legal issues that came up subsequent to preparation of the, of the staff reports. It, when it does come back to the planning commission, it will be renoticed, um, in accordance with the municipal code.
If, if we're going to do this by motion, do we have to have a discussion? Because. There's one. Small issue that's just what you said that I think that I would like to address at least on the H two on the propane tank.
If, if we're pulling it from the agenda.
Well, I, I'm asking that it not be pulled, but that we limit discussion on it.
You, you can choose to continue the item, open the public, hold the hearing, open the public hearing and then take some comments and then close the public hearing, but staff isn't prepared to answer. Um, multitude of questions that have come up since the preparation of the staff report.
Is that? Is that amenable to, to you, to everybody?
I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Okay, but we would have to get to it. I can't do it right now.
I think at this point, based on the circumstances, that we should go ahead as recommended and open the hearing for no staff discussion is what I'm hearing, but we want to just open for.
For comment, for public comments, and then we would, then we would, instead of pulling the, what you're asking for is if.
To pull the item.
Want to make some comments.
Right.
To make those comments, oh, get to the agenda item. Make the comments.
Right.
Open the public hearing, close the, don't close the continue, uh, public hearing, but continue the public hearing to the next available meeting.
Well, could circumstances?
Do it necessarily date certain. I mean, we could. Continue it to the September meeting. If we're not ready at the September meeting, we can address it then.
Right, it would need to be at the next available meeting when things are resolved. Okay. Um, so then at that point, what we are looking to do is. Call for a motion of the approval of the agenda with an amendment to the H one item to. It's, it's strictly reference the, the correct project. It's, it's the Picnic Hill Improvement Project and there's just a typo on the resolution, so. I just want to make sure because it is a public hearing that we are abiding by the process and that kind of an amendment I wanted to get documented. And so at this point, with that being said. Do we have a call for a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda. As I remember.
We have a second.
The move as it exists now.
With the amendment to the H one item, just as I mentioned, uh, to correct the name and then the H two item will be on the agenda for a hearing, which we will anticipate continuing to the next available meeting. After public comment.
And continuing discuss and continuing the public hearing.
And continuing the public hearing at the next available meeting.
That makes no sense.
Okay, so let me just, let me just explain the options. You, you can. You can leave it as is, hold the public hearing and take action tonight. Staff is not recommending that based on the comments that we received with some legal questions that the city attorney needs to address. The second option is to pull it completely from the agenda, not hold a public hearing and renotice the project at a later date. The third option is what? The Commissioner Gebhardt is, is recommending, has made a motion for, which is to. Leave the agenda as is, and when we get to that item. Take, you know, I'll deliver the staff report. There'll be some, um, you'll can ask questions. If I can answer them, I will. If I can't, I won't. And then open the public hearing. If there's any public comment at that time, you can take it and then if. When that's, you know, exhausted, that public comment is exhausted, you will, instead of closing and taking action, you will, um, continue the public hearing to the next.
Next available meeting.
Those are the three options. As I said, Commissioner Gebhardt has made the motion to. Um, take that third option of continuing after we take public comment.
My question is, if we proceed with public comment and it comes back at a later time, could there be significant other things to talk about?
Yes, absolutely.
And it, and it could invalidate any previous public comment or change what will be said. So I would, I would think we postponed the whole night.
Said, I'm inclined.
Find it agree.
I'm inclined not to answer. A lot of questions tonight because I, I, I'm unsure of where this is going once the, uh, city attorney has done his analysis.
And I feel like for the transparency of the room, we were advised to pull the agenda completely of, of that item. So I am of the volition that, um, the board as a, as a commission has. Has a right to. So, so what are we saying? Are we saying like it's a three, two? What are we saying here on? You're ready to pull.
You, you have a motion on the table.
I'll withdraw my motion and we can.
We'll bring it and wait till we get the updated information.
Okay, so then the motion would need to be, if that, if that's the planning commission's choice, then the motion would need to be that you're amending the agenda as presented to remove item H two.
And then we would need a motion for that.
That's the motion.
The amended motion. Well, I think that was Mark's motion. So I mean, I can make a motion that we pull the H two item from the agenda to be, um, to be pulled period with, with no comment.
I'll second it.
Can I call for a vote of that item, please? Um, Janice, do you mind doing like a kind of?
Roll call.
Yes, please. Yes.
Commissioner Palidi. Commissioner Palidi, what's your vote on the, uh, agenda, approval of the agenda with continuing item, uh, two?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
You're taking a vote on approval of the agenda?
Okay.
With the option that item.
She's doing a roll call vote.
Two would be continued. So.
We're pulling H two.
Pulling it.
That's exactly what you're, you're pulling H two.
Yeah, we've amended that to pull H two completely from the agenda tonight and it will be at a later date noticed. And at that point, we will have further comment is the.
Okay.
Motion. And we had a first and a second, so we're, we're doing a roll call vote just to ensure that we're on the same page.
H one.
Is that H one?
I.
I'm sorry, H two. H two is the one that we're pulling. It's the Hunter Lane. I apologize. Too much.
Aye.
No.
Mr. Caputo.
Aye.
And Chairman Hoitska.
No.
How did Mr. Palidi vote? I didn't hear.
I, he voted yes.
It was three to.
Just for clarification, I won't talk about specifically what it is, but I think there's one thing that. If we don't address one issue. If it comes back, next time we discuss it the other way, I think the whole thing's going to go out the window. I think there's, but.
So I, if, if there are questions or comments on the information and you need more information from staff, feel free to email. That your questions, the more specific you are about your questions, the easier it is for me to interpret and be able to give you a clear answer.
I don't.
And the, it would, when it's brought back.
I don't have any, any questions from here. Uh, my. I'll just say it. It's strictly a legal thing on. Apparently the conclusion that's been reached to that above ground tanks.
And that's the legal.
Are banned.
That's the legal issue that we are reviewing. There is a conflict.
One thing that I would like to address.
And that's, okay, so there is a, there is a potential conflict within the municipal code. That was what was brought up by the chair and by a council member. So that is what's being researched by the, by the city attorney at this point. So that's why staff would like it to be pulled from the agenda.
Can't you make a comment?
Can I make a comment on it or is that not allowed?
Yeah, I mean, you can. Because this is now off the agenda. Public comments not on the agenda, you could make a comment at that time.
Does he have to go make a public comment as a citizen?
Yeah. All planning commissioners can make a comment during the public comment section.
But I think we have voted to pull the items so that negates unless, of course, Vice Chair Gebhardt is welcome to have. Um, you know, we do have commissioner reports. We do have all kinds of things that, you know, I think we could appropriately include at that point because I was. I was, um. I was curious if we were going to have an opportunity for public comment because of the, um. Things already being disclosed, but at this point. Let's just, um, continue on with the agenda at this time. And also we'll move your comments to the.
Open comment.
End of the. The comments. So at this point, we.
I have, I have one question. Since it's been pulled from the agenda, is it now available for public comment? Since it's not on the agenda?
Yes, unfortunately it will. I mean, not unfortunately, that, that is what we have done by doing that. And so, um. I do, I just was expressing that I don't know that we would need to have Mark make that comment.
I understand, I understand.
You know, as a commissioner report. Yeah.
Sure that the public want, they want to make a comment if they can now.
Correct. That would be coming as item G for the comment period on items not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda. So at this point, I believe we have an approval of the calendar pulling, um, item H two. And that would, um, bring us on to our approval of the minutes in which I did. Have a follow-up comment on that, including our April eighth consent calendar for the fifteen Plymouth Highway. So I just didn't want that to be lost in the shuffle as we call for a motion to approve those minutes.
Uh, and you.
That is the, uh, and I believe I see, this is, uh, Fisher Mizrahi in the audience as well. This was at the April eighth meeting. There was discussion about the residence at fifteen Plymouth Highway being located in the commercial zone that burned down a few, several years ago now. And we had discussion at that time. It was a non-agendized item, but we've discussed it a few times now and have directed staff to allow the, um, residential permit to proceed in the C one, C two zone. With, um, allow the residential with a conditional use permit. So we expected that to be brought back and I'm unclear about where, where we are with this as far as, yeah.
I will, I will address that on a, on your, um. Where's the best place to do that? On city planner report.
On a city planner.
Give you an update on that.
Okay. I just didn't want it to get lost.
Okay.
In the shuffle of.
But there, you're not, you're not making any recommendations to change to the minutes.
No, but I'm saying that we're accepting the minutes from April, which requested to have that item be brought back. And we're now in August and it has not been brought back.
So I'll just, I'll just address that right now because it's been brought up. So what you were addressing, what you were directing staff to bring back was a wholesale change to the zoning code.
I know.
Not, not the individual property.
Well, I think we were requesting that there be a, an allowance of that particular property.
Yes. So.
Of there, no, we're not.
No, so, so the, the city council, it, they are allowed because the building burned down.
Yes.
For the public's, for the public's information, this is fifteen Plymouth Highway, a, a residential structure in a commercial zone that burned down. The burned down unit is, was supposed to be reconstructed within a three-year period according to the ordinance. For a variety of reasons, including COVID and a lawsuit and a variety of other issues. That didn't happen, so the applicants requested an extension on that. The city council granted that extension, so they're moving forward with rebuilding a residence in the commercial zone. What came up was during this whole process with the planning commission directed staff to make changes to the. The, um, allowed uses in the commercial zone that residents could be. Constructed with a conditional use permit so that they weren't expressly prohibited from the commercial zone. That's what staff will be bringing back.
Okay.
Does that help clarify?
No, it does. I, I have some bigger.
I don't, I don't think that that's exactly correct though. Um. I looked at this thing and brought it up. The property on Plymouth Highway is in, was it C two, right? Looking at the C two zoning, commercial two. There's a whole section around Main Street and there are, I counted over twenty.
Yes.
Residences, houses that have always been residences.
And that's part of the problem.
That I'm sure unbeknownst to them got changed to C two where residential isn't allowed. So if something were to happen to their house, they can't rebuild.
They can rebuild. It's considered an existing non-conforming.
I understand it, but why, I mean, then you have insurance.
I understand your.
You're non-conforming. But my point from the get-go on this thing was that this was a mistake. It was never meant to prevent residential use where there already is residential use. I talked to, I talked to George about this just the other day. I talked to two city council members that were on the city council when those changes were made. Um. And I didn't single them out. They were both random meetings and I asked them, when was Dan Epperson? Ran into him here and Ron Smiley in my backyard. Next to his backyard. Um, they both said that that's not what they intended to do. They intended to give people more freedom to do what they want with their property. It should be an allowed use. That's been the only use that they've ever had. And. My feeling is our city planner at the time. And we caught him doing this somewhere else. Yeah, not you. This is a couple of city planners ago. A gentleman from Elk Grove. I think he just simply. Changed. He put the little N in the box where it should have been a P and it's, you know, not permitted as opposed to permitted, but changed the whole thing.
There are.
I'm, what, I'm sorry.
It's, it's okay. I understand.
Soapbox here, but I, I'm really thinking if you were just to go back and look at that, at what they actually passed, I'll bet you that that. N wasn't supposed to be there.
And that's a great idea. I will go back.
Anything. You just correct it.
I will go back and look and when, when that table was updated, uh, that you're referring to. I also have some, there's some other conflicts in that table that are significant and that are. Um, from a planning standpoint, difficult to interpret. So, um, there, there are quite a few things that need to be done.
Yeah, there was one.
I completely understand your frustration, um, and.
I mean, he, he colored the maps wrong.
Yeah.
Which caused some real trouble and expense to some people until we looked back at the old maps and saw that this is the way it was supposed to be. But you can color something pink instead of purple and it costs somebody thousands of dollars.
Is this something that can correct at the planning level or does it, do they have to take it to?
No, no. So the idea here is, and this was, this goes back to the, the last planning commission meeting that we had was I have a large list that is continuing to grow of amendments that need to be made, not just to. Uh, Title seventeen, which is the zoning code, but also the Title sixteen, which is the land division code where there's some conflicts, um, between that and now we have some potential conflicts with Title fifteen. So, um. The city attorney and I are working on compiling that list of changes. So that we can make these amendments to the municipal code in an efficient manner and bring it to the planning commission. Um, changes to the zoning code require an ordinance, which requires two readings at the city council. So it's a process that we want to go as smoothly as possible and to be as. So it's a process that we want to go as smoothly as possible and to be as efficient as possible. So it's going to just take a little bit of time to compile all of this and then rewrite all the sections and then cross-check to make sure that we're not adding to the conflicts that's already in the municipal code and making it worse, but making it, actually making it better. So it's a process.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, do I have a call for a motion of the consent calendar from April eighth? For the minutes, I'm sorry, the consent calendar is approving the minutes from April eighth. Yes, that's, that's
There were only three of us here that limited, I would move to accept the minutes.
Yeah, I would second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I abstained. He wasn't there.
Yep. So
Same thing, this is why it was continued.
That's why I was kind of like being a little, a little pressed upon it.
Why would we decide to bring it back?
I, I have no idea when we're going to meet again. And so at this point, I do not want to let another opportunity to go by where we are not having the conversation that we need to have. And the importance of that and the magnitude of that, as we've seen, it ripples into other things. So we do need to prioritize our zoning as well as our municipal code. Thank you. And with that, I, we've had a lot of presentations and announcements already. It feels like maybe just announcements, but we'll go ahead and move on then at this point to opening the meeting for a public comment on items that are not on the agenda. And we have Mr. Roats coming to the podium. Thank everyone.
And I will advise if the planning commissioners have any comments on any of the items that are potentially coming to us, that they not predispose themselves as to the decision that they're going to make. That's my only
I know a little bit about this. I went to every meeting when they made this deal. And Chris Jordan, I wouldn't mind mentioning these
I don't either, Christopher Jordan.
Yeah, and, and I brought this up, that's why they're CT, because of the bunch of us. There's like, I had 40 people here. There were 70 places they changed our zoning because we were all commercial. And you could build on a residential commercial back then. And if you look at the old laws and you could actually go six stories from property line to property line. And I bitched about that. They were devaluing our property, which they did, and they made CT, which covers almost everything, like you says, why should we be able to do it? And you can't, because 124 all the way out, that was all commercial. If you remember, every state highway, both sides of the road were commercial. That's the way it was. And, and I bitched about that, but it didn't do no good. And the, the other thing, I, this propane tank thing, I know there's some kind of a law in there. There's no propane, but there's, I think, three or four tanks in the city right now. I've been here for years. Okay, and the thing that's bad about, they, they got the hydrant going. They didn't have water for a while. That was a problem. But the whole thing is, where are you guys going to, you, you bitched about all this stuff having no business. And a guy wants to open a business here and you shoot it down. You ain't getting no sales tax. You're going broke and you breaking no sales tax. You chase people away from this city flat and you've done it. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Do we have any more comments at this time?
I guess I do. Nobody else getting up. Oh, go ahead.
Trace Press, Castle Oaks, I've never been to one of these meetings before, so this is quite interesting. Um, my question is, and I don't know if this is the right venue, are ADUs allowed in? I don't want to say Amador County. I'm, I'll just say Castle Oaks because that's the only place that I've, I've seen it. But are ADUs allowed?
Yes, if you, if you go to the city's website and click on the, the button that says municipal codes, and it'll take you to our whole giant municipal codes. Put in the search bar accessory, accessory dwelling units. We have a whole section in the zoning code that the state requires all jurisdictions to read, to allow for ADUs. So yes, is the answer to the question. The guidelines are in that section there and you can read that. And if you have any questions, feel free
Thank you. I just thought about, well, I was sitting here. I know it's happening in Southern California a lot and the Bay Area too. But I just, I wondered here.
Yes, if you, if you look at all the building that's, you know, there's not a ton of building being done in Amador County, but the bulk of the new, new residential development is actually ADUs. So.
Thank you.
Good evening, Marcia Edick. I don't have any questions. This is my first meeting too. It's just a comment. I am here tonight because of you, Amber. I have seen you at a couple of city council meetings and you've come up to the podium. And I find you to be incredibly bright. You have my wholehearted respect and support, and I appreciate you. And that's all I wanted to say. I'm here tonight because of you.
Thank you, Ms. Edick. Any other comments or any comments on June, Zoom, Janice? Okay. So with that, Mark, did you want to go ahead and make?
Yes, and I'm not, in one way or the other, this is about the propane thing. Just simply on the legal issue. I never do this, but I will right now. I've been a lawyer since 1988. I've done well over a hundred jury trials in Amador County, thousands of hearings. Amador, Calaveras, San Joaquin, Sacramento, Yolo. I worked for Department of Corrections as an attorney for 11 years. I did over 6,000 Superior Court hearings for them. I wrote legislation for CDC. The bottom line is I know how to read a statute. And the apparent idea that above-ground tanks are illegal in I own is simply wrong. If you read, okay, it was a state fire code that we adopted. I guess everybody had to adopt it. Which is interesting too, because if the whole state had to adopt it, above-ground tanks aren't allowed anywhere in the state of California. And the way that this statute reads, and it's just been adapted into our code to stick in the term I own, it says storage, the title says, locations where above-ground tanks are prohibited. Now that's the title. That's not the statute. Goes like this, it's short. Storage of class one and class two liquids in above-ground tanks outside of buildings is prohibited within the limits established by law as the limits of districts in which such storage is prohibited. This presumed has already been prohibited. What this statute is asking to do is to set the limits of where that prohibition is. The part right before that, that above-ground tanks outside of buildings, above-ground tanks outside of buildings shall comply with sections. And then it starts with the section that I just read. So the implication is, the presumption is that they're allowed unless a jurisdiction hasn't allowed them, which we never did. As a matter of fact, and you know this one, oh, I have to look for it. I got it somewhere. But we specifically have, was it 1522080? Locations where above-ground tanks, oh, that's the prohibited, excuse me, that's the wrong one. Allowed use definitions. Fuel storage and distribution, a large-scale facility where fuel, such as propane and gasoline, is stored. That's an, that's a definition of an allowed use. All I'm saying is, we need to start this discussion with these tanks being legal. Or we're in for a world of hurt. I think we have to have lots of discussions on, who knows what the size of the tanks, where they are, everything else. But I think the beginning of the discussion has to be a presumption because this is what the law is, is that they're legal. Any other issues we might have, take it from there.
Which is why we staff record
I'm not the city attorney. They're the one that's going to have to make that decision.
Exactly, which is why staff wasn't comfortable moving forward tonight without having the city attorney be able to exhaustively look at this issue.
Okay, that's all. For now.
So with that, I will not add anymore. We will leave it at that. And, and
You know, I'd, I'd like to say something, you know, the, the thing about the propane tank and what have you. This is not something that we should be afraid of. Okay, this is public comment, my, my, this is something we should not be, be afraid of. I'd, I'd worry more about a big truck coming down, making a left-hand turn here and taking out seven cars and the Mexican restaurant and killing 75 people. That, so paranoia will destroy you. And Larry made a good point about, we need, we need business here.
There are some specific facts surrounding this, so we, yes.
And in today's day and age, you, you've got equipment. They're not, they're not buying the stuff in, you know, North Korea and shipping it over here and putting it in. So anyway, that's my opinion.
Any other comments at this time? With that, we will close the public comment period and we will move on to our public hearing portion of the agenda regarding the Howard Park Picnic Hill site plan. And this is the site plan review and adoption of resolution PC 2025-02. And at this time, what I will do is invite our city planner, Susan, Ms. Susan Peters, to go ahead and start her staff report on this.
Sure. So the city recently entered into a grant agreement with the Amador Water Agency to make water use efficiency improvements at Howard Park. Most of you know this as originally it came to the city as a turf replacement for the fields. That wasn't a project that was palatable to the city council. So the project was amended to make improvements to, to Picnic Hill, removing the grass that's there and also fixing a lot of leaking irrigation. So as the part of the improvements to the Picnic Hill area includes adding Americans with Disability Act ADA compliant pathways and parking, which you currently don't have. And then also to put in some facilities to accommodate events such as concerts, weddings, et cetera. So like an amplifier type event. The general plan for this project or site is parks and recreation, which allows for community-wide park services. And the zoning is parks and community service, which also allows for both passive and active recreational activities and public services. As with all site plans, the planning commission has to make, to approve or deny a site plan. The planning commission has to make findings or not make findings. And those are identified in Section 1710030, Site Plan Review of the City of Ione's Municipal Code. And they are as follows. The proposed project is consistent with the objectives of the general plan, complies with applicable zoning regulations, planned development master plan or specific plan provisions, improvement standards and other applicable standards and regulations adopted by the city. That the proposed project will not create safety conflicts with vehicular bicycle or pedestrian transportation modes of circulation. That the site layout, as well as the landscaping, lighting and other development features are compatible with adjacent residential and non-residential uses. And that the proposed project will not have an adverse impact on public health or safety. This project is, staff considered this project exempt from CEQA in accordance with California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, Section 15301, 15303 and 15304, which is existing facilities, new construction or conversion of small structures and minor alterations to land. So the recommendation is that the planning commission adopt the attached resolution PC 2025-02, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Ione to approve the site plan permit for the Picnic Hill improvements. My typo. You can see I was using other staff reports. And, and this also should say that to instruct staff to file the notice of exemption. I have the city manager here and the contractor is available also. What you were presented wasn't, admittedly, a lot of information. This is a kind of a tight timeline on this project due to the, the constraints that the Department of Water Resources has put on this voluntary agreement where the grants come from. You know, so it's kind of been a work in progress as we go to try to make sure that we get this project completed before the deadline at the end of the year. This did go to Parks and Rec, is Selena's today? She left, okay. This did go to Parks and Rec and was approved by the Parks and Rec Committee. So if you have questions for staff, one of us will try to answer them.
So at this time, I was going to go ahead and open the hearing to comment and have board discussion after comment. Does that, does anyone have a compelling reason not to? Or I'm just going to jump into the public comment. Janice, do we have any Zoom comments on the Picnic Hill project? Okay. Do we have any comments from those attending on the Picnic Hill project?
Patty Fisher Mizuraka, Ione. In, in this plan, it's, I love the idea. We, we visited this idea years ago when I was involved with Ione Picnic Association. But one of the things that I don't see on this map or master plan, and, and maybe nobody really cares but me, is the dunk tank out there. And I know this is a water project. And I calculated what that tank holds. And granted, it's only filled for two days out of the year, which is Ione Homecoming Friday and Saturday. That dunk tank's been out there, I'm 61, it's been out there at least 61 years. My father serviced it, put a little French drain in so that it could drain into that gullyway where the water sort of sits out there at Picnic Hill. We have water that he worked with the city years ago to make sure that we had water to fill it up. But I just didn't know if there was plans to add that. I know we don't want a dunk tank out there with a beautiful theater, but to place that somewhere out there for the scouts, the scouts benefit from that dunk tank out there. Ione Homecoming Committee, they house the mechanisms, which you don't even find them anymore. We actually pull them down every year, store them in the sea container so that they don't get stolen. But I think it's something they need to consider. It's, it's probably an easy build. I could probably get a group of people to help build it, cinder block. We would just make sure we would have proper drainage for it. I know Mark Tresner down the street years ago rebuilt it for us when Pete and I were running Ione Homecoming. So I just wanted to, hopefully that didn't get overlooked, but maybe it did. But, and maybe nobody really cares, but it benefits homecoming. People buy beer, people buy food standing there. They love knocking Stacy into the water, the chief into the water. It, it, and it brings, it brings money for the, for the scouts. So, thanks.
If we can get George Lee this year.
Yeah, no, would you mind? Thank you.
So obviously, you know, Ms. Mizuraka, a lot of things were taken into consideration. So that also is in consideration. So a lot of the things that you mentioned, all the buildings out there, there are locations to move them to. Okay, so every attempt will be made to move any building that we can. Because one of the things that were under consideration was obviously the Picnic Hill. I mean, I own homecoming is a big event. So again, in, in fact, we also had conversations with the, the firm that's doing the master again, in fact, we also had conversations with the the firm that's doing the master plan right now in terms of so we worked in conjunction with them. So all these things are taken into consideration. So there is going to be specific areas to move all of the structures. None of the structures will be lost. There's going to be some that are in bad shape and that we will have to rebuild.
That was actually one of my questions is, is this in the master plan for Howard Park or it's being added or?
Yes, it's already incorporated into the master plan. So sometime in the very near future, once the we got the comments from the Parks and Rec Commission, and we'll be bringing it here to the plan.
Okay, good, good. Okay. Any other questions? Any question?
You know, this is great. This really is. And this should be very, very exciting for for the taxpayer. Okay, one thing that I got a question on, is there someone here that is hitting it? Who's? Oh, you're okay. Why so small?
Again, we are trying to take a lot of other things into consideration, such as Picnic Hill. It is a playground right now. We're not moving the playground structure. We tried to maximize the amphitheater so we can accommodate as many events as we can. As it stands now, the amphitheater can accommodate about two hundred fifty people, which would allow for concerts, weddings, birthday parties. And the way it's designed, which I'll have a presentation shortly.
The only thing, boy, if you if you could get it to here's, you know, swinging for the for the fence. But if you could get to a thousand people. Well, listen.
It's a lot of people.
You know, at at an average ticket of thirty, forty, fifty bucks a head, we can start bringing some some entertainment in. You know, and and I, I mean, I don't know, maybe maybe baby steps and grow after that, but sure like to see it triple the size of two hundred fifty people.
Well, we'll take a look at that and we'll try to make it as big as we comfortably can according to the size and dimensions.
And the other question I have is, is there gonna is there gonna be like a a promotions committee that are gonna bring people, bring concerts there?
Okay, yes, that's all part of the master plan that's going to be presented in the near future regarding the Howard Park. There's a whole myriad of things happening simultaneously with Howard Park, with this particular project, with the horse arena. It's all going to come at one time. So there's a lot of things happening. So which will be unveiled in the future.
I did have a question also about. So I understood the ADA compliant roadways. Was the amphitheater also intended to be ADA compliant accessible? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, no, it wasn't clear from the
That's one of what that was one of the biggest issues.
Yeah, no, we've been talking about
Access in, I think, four different areas.
Four. Okay, I like that. Okay. Oh, are those the red? I couldn't quite tell. Okay, so the red is going to be the ADA accessibility. Because I didn't have, I mean, I didn't see a lot of materials specified or exact, you know, things. And so that's just more to come in our
We're going through the process now. Obviously, we're getting pricing. You know, Tom Borges has been gracious enough to help me in terms of assisting me with costs because he has a lot of machinery out there already. So he's been extremely helpful in developing this the site plan in terms of developing costs and so forth. And so he's been really helpful. And so if you don't mind, I can have him go over the plan. Mr. Borges, would you want to go over the plan?
Yeah, I think that was great. Thank you so much. No, I appreciate you being here today. Thank you.
Good evening, Matta Chair, other members of the Planning Commission. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Thomas Borg. I am the president of Axios Homes. We're the builder developer of the Wildflower subdivision here in Ione. When we first learned that the city had received a grant, we were intrigued by that. And I immediately approached the the city to actually see if we could help in any way to give back. It's a give back project. I'm not the contractor record. I'm not trying to benefit from it. But what we are trying to do is is taking the money that is being given to us in a grant. And one of the the key elements is to go ahead and remove one hundred and twenty-seven thousand feet of grass. And that comes with some expense and that comes with some cost. And the cost to the community really should be the benefit that is derived by the community. And what I mean by that is we approached the city and some of the staff and we took a field trip out to the St. George Winery. Because one of the ideas that had come up with the city retained designer for Howard Park plan was an amphitheater. And everybody thinks an amphitheater should be a concrete step-down area, and that's what you envisioned. And what we saw at the winery was something that was a little bit less aggressive and allowed for sit-down tables, chairs, you could have community events. Thus is the reason why I think that two fifty to three hundred people is probably maximum, just because there's so many things that are going on. And whether the city decides decides down the road to possibly, you know, rent chairs and tables and have weddings and all of that, I think that all fits into the deal. It's a beautiful venue and accommodates the grant. So really, I think some of those items are the benefits to the city. But more importantly, it gives us a stepping stone into taking Howard Park and moving in a positive direction with a lot of vision. There's a zero ADA compliance. We spent a lot of time after our three hundred homes and get to a point where we got everybody guiding in the subdivision coming to the park. And then soon as they hit the horse track, there's no compliance. So I'll show you on the board. I don't know how much materials that you actually had, but really what we have is a situation where we have worked with everybody in the planning stages. And we went ahead and immediately go ahead. We're up against the clock. We have till the end of the year, which doesn't give you a lot of time to do some of the engineering that you need to do. And we're, I'm sorry about not being able to kind of really focus down on all the materials. But I think I can answer whatever questions that you have that have have come up. Some of the immediate needs that we've actually addressed is I had an arborist come out this last week. There is definitely some dangerous trees in the park. I don't know if any of you have been to the park yesterday. But with a hundred-degree days, we lost about a twelve-inch branch off of one of the largest oak trees. This happens. And there's mistletoes, mistletoe growing in the trees and some of the trees that are outside of the picnic area that people are constantly encumbered with, where they're hitting the trees. It's an uneven area. And those trees have actually been also part of the study. So some of those would actually be removed. And I can show you, we're trying to gain some 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 perspective in parking and allowing to have some ADA compliant parking. But most importantly, to be able to transport people through this area and be in compliance. And I think we've accomplished that. And I think that the way that we've done it, we would go ahead and also, as you're going down the road past Picnic Hill, going down towards the bicycle area or the golf area or down to the ball fields, you would be able to very easily, as a next stage, being able to add on to the compliance to allow people to park in that parking lot and go to the ball fields, through the ball fields, and then also go into the subdivision, which would which would really be great to have people not only parking there or having to drive around, but be able to walk to the games and and enjoy the park. It's a park, right? So I think we've been conscious about getting rid of dangerous trees. And we've been conscious about trying to go ahead and manipulate what we can to give some definition to the project. So with that being said, why don't I go ahead? I'll talk up for everybody. I was at the school today. I do have to say they're they're hot to trot over there. They have all the teachers back-to-school nights tonight, first day of school tomorrow. We got the emergency access road, the buses we're practicing down the road. It's been it's been really a great scenario. I'll face the planning commission first. Really what we have here, this is the entrance into the park. This is the the road that we're talking about that is, I want to say semi asphalt, but really here would go all the way back to the ball fields. This is an ADA parking lot. We would like to go ahead and have some extruded curves here and the parking here and asphalt here. This is our ADA path of travel that goes down all the way here. And with this area here, it'd be full compliant, which would bring you back down to Evelyn Bishop Hall. And and then these light green areas, those are ten feet wide, concrete. And what that would allow is people to go into the park, set up their booths.
This is for Picnic Hill?
Yes, yes.
This is for the Ione Picnic Association.
These areas here. And then the amphitheater is here in the middle. This is an ADA ADA path of travel that actually brings you to the lower part of the amphitheater. And these red areas are walking paths, which would be four feet, also concrete. And we have a large supply of oak trees over here, which is where I just spoke about that one. These trees would be brought in for shade. And the structure that actually sits on the amphitheater, this is an actual picture of the amphitheater. So the stage being down here and tables and chairs for events, sit-down dinners, whatever you prefer. But a nice ability to see the park and a whole different atmosphere and allow to have concerts in the park and different musical venues. And I think that the initial stage is what we're utilizing the funds for to be in compliance for the grant, but also to have an amenity for the community. And that's why we're involved is that's I think this is a really a good give back project to the community. And if it's our expertise to actually bring it and making sure that we can share some economies of scale, and we can go ahead and have some of the contractors that we utilize be able to participate in that whole scenario. I think it's beneficial to to the to the whole community. So this being a rendition of the actual amphitheater, this you know, replicates a conceptual drawing of parties and as well as bands and even weddings venues that you could actually utilize. I don't know. I've been taken back. I've spent several different weekends here in the last month. And it's amazing what actually happens at Evelyn Bishop Hall. You don't realize that. And the ability for them not to be actually in the building, they could use the building for catering. And you see that they bring in all kinds of different people with with the food trucks and and barbecues and pizza ovens and all the other things that go along with that. It's real easy to be able to cater and come right come right back to where you're headed, back towards the amphitheater and in a seating area. But this area here, these are not the original stairs. They would be brought back to actually be able to help move people. And this one hill right here, we would actually expand that over. So you'd have a little bit more path of travel for vehicles to go in the back. Because in the back where the beer garden is, highly high-traffic area, lots of weddings and lots of events actually happen in that back in that back area. And I think that that's kind of disservice because if somebody parks there, there's a problem. They're trying to hunt down who has the cars there and what have you. So I think that would be there. And this front area here is where we're talking about a couple of the trees that the arborists did go ahead and take into account. This would allow at least to the removal of those four or five trees would allow this to be totally recreated and actually put in these areas here that would define a parking lot and would allow the first part or the first step into going ahead and continuing all of parking down past Evelyn Bishop Hall and the new parking lot that was there that's actually been servicing well. So people actually have a nice place to park and and they're close by. So I just think that the removable bollards, it would stop traffic from having, you never want to have people be able to travel with a car through a high-traffic area. But that's that's simply here. And then you'd also have the ability to go ahead and eventually put up some sort of fencing down the road and have, you know, some hardscape and landscaping and some picnic tables around here through the whole park to at least accommodate the park as what it should be used for, a great place to rest. The initial park these time, the initial and the existing playground area, this one and the one there would probably both be retained. There are a lot of people that actually utilize that. And I think that's really be better than that. And addressing some of the issues that happened during homecoming. It's a it's a great, it's a great event. And I have to say, the first time I came here in twenty nineteen, we attended every single deal. We got our booths and we got all the sales and all the things. It's it's an absolute great time for everybody in the community to feel the real comfort of Ione. And that's really what it represents more than anything. But I think that some of the walking paths and some of the ability to help set up and bring your things to 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 go ahead and enjoy homecoming, this facilitates that. And it also gives us path of travel. I think we need to at least start the ADA compliance in Howard Park.
Well, one of the things that we focused on was maintaining the charm of Ione. Because we looked at a lot of, you know, a lot of amphitheaters have sale structures. Well, those cost two to three hundred thousand. So it's extremely exorbitant. So we came up with the concept of using, when we looked at various facilities in a vineyard vineyards, that would provide shade and in a natural setting. So I'm sorry.
Could I ask you a question or two?
Sure.
So I mean, I know this has to be going quickly because of the grant thing. And we don't have like, you know, detailed schematics and all that. But I'm taking it that the the tiers are like concrete retaining walls and then grass area?
They're not, no grass.
Okay.
Have anybody in AWA find out that there's watering going for grass because that's the that's the purpose of the grant.
Yeah.
Okay.
Really, you take away the idea of an amphitheater. And what we have is we have four tiers. And we have those tiers being broken up by about an eight-inch curve as a step up. So it's a gradual amphitheater and allows to have tables and chairs and on each on each tier. And it kind of goes up and you can actually still have the elevation to see down to the stage. This being this picture here. And I and I know that minus the the Greek, the Greek gods and all the other things that were provided in a, you know, there would be be for us and and the tile and different things, we would go ahead and figure out how to accommodate that. But I just think that the stage presence down there is really what we're trying to to accentuate in the whole design, but also allow for some electricity for bands to come and play and and have something that's fully functional that somebody would down the road would really want to rent the facility.
Right.
How how wide are the the tiers?
Did you mention here?
Yeah.
About they 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 go from fifteen feet down to ten feet.
Fifteen feet down to ten.
Oh, okay. I was thinking in terms of like volcano amphitheater or Kennedy Mine, this is a completely different.
Yeah.
It's it's something that staged. This is just a gentle slope down on both sides. We have this coming down the middle for a wheelchair to access because it comes in off of our path of travel travel here. That really allows it to come into the lower part of the amphitheater. Down here is for anybody in a wheelchair and ADA compliant in the middle and down both sides.
What about lighting and sound system? Is that gonna is there gonna be a permanent?
We have plenty of power that we've investigated in Howard Park. And we would at least plumb some of that back. And you know, it's my magic wand has actually gone out of order. I don't know what happened, but they're a couple of months out. And some of those things there, we have plenty of power in the park. We want to get some of that back to so we can so we can actually facilitate. A band wants to come play. They have a certain criteria that they have to meet. We need to meet those criterias. And then also the amphitheater is surrounded. And these, the grapevines are great, very low water. But it takes a little while for them to actually get to this point. These are all metal outproppings that are to cover. So really, you can either use shades in the very beginning. We're waiting for the vines. Takes about two to three years to to get to this to this point. But really, that's something that will never rot away and will never go ahead and decay away. And we could utilize that and that would give you a great structure to hang any decorations you want, any lighting you want, anything to be used in for that purpose.
We're gonna have more more outlets for lights. There's plenty of power.
Do you have the proposed building? Because that reminded me of it. So that'll probably follow later, like the building that's going to be kind of like the, I didn't
Have some specified areas
Okay.
that that we're trying to kind of gravitate because one of the biggest things that we all love to go to homecoming for is the tri-tip sandwiches. one of the biggest things that we all love to go to homecoming for is the tri-tip sandwiches that the Barney Farming, uh, serves. And they put those onions on the, on the barbecue to make us real hungry. Uh, they're, they're, they're really tired of not wanting to go ahead and figure out how they're gonna be able to use their building.
Right.
And I, I thought I was gonna make Chief Man to cry when I says we really need to move this building. Uh, so, but he, he's gravitating towards the idea. There's some changes that have to be made to update some things and bring things kind of into the future. And, but now also lose, but also not lose some of the things that really made homecoming over a hundred years.
Yeah, no, um, the fair has made a lot of updates and a lot of amendments to some of the facilities and some of these things. So I, I strictly believe we do need to find a way to resource and repurpose and revisit and, and reuse. But, um, specifically there was on the plans, it's, um, I can't even read it on this copy. But it's like a restroom and like a potential room. I'm kind of envisioning like that little area behind the Biaggi stage at the fairgrounds where they kind of have like a little get ready room and like, you know, a restroom. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Something for storage.
Right.
Also something that people not, there, it's really difficult if you're behind, but you're out in the open. You do have some facilities to do that. No rest, restaurant would be something that would be down the road.
Okay.
There's some other planning that has to be made. There are some areas that we do have sewer and we have some restrooms. To kind of see how we would direct traffic either towards Edlin Bishop Hall or towards the ball field where the guns are available.
Right.
See down the road, we might be able to make some sort of connect.
Okay.
Be a little bit closer. My, my main purpose was to get everybody moving through the area and have access for everybody to utilize the whole area.
I have a question for Mr., Mr. Lee. I know it's being paid by, by a grant, but can you give me a fifteen second crash course and bring me up to speed on the amount? And who it's from and our timetable?
The grant is through the Department of Water facilitated to, through Amada Water Agency. So Amada Water Agency is going a step further in terms of reimbursables. Usually you have to submit the reimbursables to the state or Amada Water Agency is going to front the money for the department. So we're not waiting two or three months, uh, for the, uh, for the reimbursement. Uh, they also allocated, I've been, how much was the amount for the irrigation, I believe? I think that was like eighty-five thousand specifically for the irrigation of the soccer fields and baseball fields. Because of the leakage that has been occurring over the years, so they allocated that much just for the irrigation system. Uh, that is under design right now. Um, so the plan is when, uh, the soccer season is over, that we've got thirty days to get that done and put it out to contract. Um, so I've already been talking to potential contractors to, to get busy on that. Um, with respect to, uh, uh, when the money has to be spent, it has to be spent before the end of the year. So that's why the, things are very, very tight. Um, and again, um, I would rather have that challenge and try to make, you know, this, uh, nice facility for the city of ION, uh, than not do it at all. Uh, so again, that's a timeline that we do. So again, it's very tight.
So with that being said, that it would be planned for after soccer, is there, and I know it's all very tentative. But is there any kind of a timeline of construction that would be like into twenty twenty-six? Like I understand it has to be spent, but like, is there an unusable portion of?
We gotta get it done this year, this year. We gotta get construction complete this year. Well, that, that's the challenge that we have.
Just, just to put it into perspective, this, this grant was, um, provided by the Department of Water Resources as part of a years, years, multiple years long process of a voluntary agreement that has to do with fisheries in the McCombey, McCombey River. Um, so, and, uh, very suddenly, the Department of Water Resources, um, after lots of negotiations and then dead silence approved the agreement. But they did not change any of the timelines in those agreements. So the water agency was, is receiving about three million dollars on this grant, for this grant towards leak detection and, and, um, other conservation type efforts. And the, you know, that's a drop in the bucket, excuse the pun, compared to like East Bay Mud, who's getting uh, uh, way more than that. And so imagine their projects and trying to get them done with the same timeline.
Yeah, wow.
So there is pressure on DWR to extend the timeline. We're not sure if that's gonna happen or not. But, um, until we, you know, until the, the water agency is able to get that extended, the, the city of ION unfortunately has to have the pedal to the metal.
Is there somebody else trying to get that same money?
From, from Amada Water Agency? Absolutely.
That makes the timing even more correct.
Yeah. So if it's not used here, there are other entities that have some projects teed up.
Right, right.
So I, you know, I think this is really a good, you know, I'm gonna put on my own personal comment here that you, when I first started here, a lot of the comments that I got was that ION is kind of like the stepchild of the county. And doesn't get their due, you know, what's due to them. Um, this is an opportunity that I, I think where you, you are getting highlighted and you are getting attention paid to you. Um, and it's, it's a tough one because it is a tight timeline. But, um, but it, you know, I, I think it's a good, it's a good offer and it's a good grant. And I think you have a good project here.
One of the main benefits of this facility and also the master plan of Howard Park is we will, the city of ION will finally be able to monetize. And we all talk about, you know, generating sales revenue, sales revenues, which has been neglected over the past ten to fifteen years. We've been relying on building permits. Well, building permits are dried up at the moment. So again, this would give us some avenues to generate sales tax dollars. Uh, our goal with, uh, with Howard Park is there's going to be almost eleven hundred parking spaces. Okay, which will provide us parking, which everybody complains about. And one of the things that we want to initiate is that, hey, the residents of ION, they support Howard Park. They pay for all the expenses. So we're thinking of ways to, for, where the city of ION residents can benefit from the park. That only they can benefit. For example, like parking. If we decide to charge parking, which everywhere I go, they always charge for parking.
Right.
So if we, uh, decide to utilize some type of, uh, fee for parking, ION residents will get that for free. They should get it for free because they're the ones supporting the cost of the park. So we are trying to incorporate as many benefits as we can for the ION residents. And because again, this Howard Park is considered a, a regional park, but no one contributes to the, uh, uh, maintenance of it. So again, that's what we're focused on is providing as many benefits as we can to the res, city residents who actually do pay for the park.
You know, this is a no-brainer. I want to make a motion that we take a vote on it. You know, this, we gotta, this, this, I mean.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, we're, we're having public comment. And so we do want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to weigh in and, uh, yeah.
Any other questions for me?
Any questions on Zoom, Janice?
You did a great job. Thank you.
You did. Thank you so much for being here today. We really appreciate it, Mr. Borges. Thank you. One more question.
Okay. If I missed the opportunity, I apologize. But, um, my question is, how much of, of monetarily grant money is there available for this project? That potentially the city will receive?
Was it nine hundred and?
Nine hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Ninety-five, okay. I thought it was about a million. I didn't, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Nine hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Okay, so almost a million dollars. Will we be able to accomplish all of what looks to be really amazing? With that amount of money? Do we have an idea? Okay. Alright.
And if anyone can do it, it's our city in conjunction with Tom Borges.
Right, right. No, that's an important partnership. I appreciate it. Thank you. We have another comment.
I might as well. Jeez, can't keep my mouth shut. Turned sixty and I'm, can't, can't shut up. Um, I think it's a great idea. We've looked at this for years out there. Um, if, if anybody has sentimental, anything sentimental out there, we do. But there isn't a building out there, people, that's worth a dime. How many times have we painted those things, Andrea? They are, they can't, the city got the, most of those buildings out there for free from the state fair in seventy-four. About nineteen seventy-four, um, hauled them in, including EB Hall. Uh, Mark, you'd know. Um, all those metal buildings, they all came from the California State Fair. And, um, they were given to us for free. All we had to do was get the contractors to haul them up here. They are falling apart. They're fifty some odd years old, if not more. And it, to wipe all that out, I know Kenny probably has, I have an attachment to a lot of those metal buildings out there. But, you know, sometimes you just gotta tear it down and start over. And make it, make it a lot of, a lot of fun. And I think that the look out there, I think time is of the essence to get it, um, to get it rolling out there. It's gonna mess up my Easter egg hunt that I've done since nineteen. Well, it's been going on since the forties. So I've been doing it since seventy-eight and we're just gonna have to work around it, you know? We'll, we'll make do, you know, we'll figure that out. But, um, I think the, I think the idea is great and, um, I, I love it. I don't like the, 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 the Greek goddess things. That doesn't work for me. It doesn't, that doesn't work for me either. Yeah, it's, we're more of a Western kind of, you know, look to it. But I, I think it's great and I, I think it would be a great idea to move forward. So, thanks.
Thank you. We have one more comment?
Yeah, please.
Uh, Dave Johnson, I just wanted to say, um, I love this whole idea. We did this years ago when I was in Elk Grove. They built something like that and every Friday night they had a band come through. And you got a whole sense of community coming in. People brought in buckets of chicken, their, their, their own, uh, chairs and the whole bit. But you really got a sense of community on that. And I, uh, that homecoming thing, I've only been here two years now, but that just blew me away too. The, uh, uh, how many people come in? I think if you start charging for parking, um, you know, it's gonna be a great revenue stream. But it worked really well in Elk Grove when they did this tier thing. And they would just have some band come in every Friday night and the community just took it on right away. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments at this time before we bring it back to the board? Yeah, I, I had wondered if we had reached out to any of like the Farms of Amador or the Farmer's Market. Because there's so many great opportunities that we could use. So I, I do, um, I do think there's a lot of great support. So are we, are we ready? Any more discussion? Ready to hear a motion? I think we had a motion.
Yeah, we had a motion in a second.
You have a motion in a second already.
Are we ready to call for a vote? We will, um, usually we do our roll call vote just to ensure we have clarification.
We need to.
You gonna do a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, we have a unanimous approval with our five members for the conditional use permit. So we will go ahead and adopt the resolution of PC twenty twenty-five dash zero three approving the conditional use permit. I'm sorry, twenty twenty-five dash zero two approving the conditional, approving the site plan permit review for the picnic hill improvement project. And from there, we will close the public hearing. And we will, um, we will continue to move forward with our agenda of our, uh, planning one-on-one workshop. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Thank you, Mr. Borges. I really appreciate your attending today and the presentation. No, it looks great.
You ready?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. So this workshop is on planning and how planning works in jurisdictions. Um, this workshop was agendized at the request of the Planning Commission Chair to provide the Planning Commission with the information on the designated roles of the Planning Commission as well as the planning process in accordance with city-state rules and regulations. Um, we will touch on the Planning Commission duties and powers, the role of the general plan and zoning subdivisions. The California Environmental Quality Act and the entitlement process. I'm just gonna touch on these very quickly. You have the packet, you know, the information in your packet. Um, and of course, any time during any, um, process, if you have questions in advance, get them to me. If you have questions during a meeting, don't ever hesitate to ask me. Um, I do like questions in advance because I can come prepared to answer them. So, um, let's start with the, the Planning Commission powers and duties. Um, you are established, uh, by the city council to make recommendations for the regulation of future growth and development in the city. This includes carrying out the provisions of the city's zoning ordinance, which I'll refer to sometimes as the zoning code. Sometimes as the municipal code. Uh, promoting the community's education and participation in the planning of the city and making recommendations to the city council on land use related improvements and ordinances and city codes. Um, and I, the section of the, the municipal code that established to the Planning Commission is section two point one seven point zero nine zero. We'll get into planning and planning process. Um, the most important planning document in the city, um, is, is the city's general plan. Uh, the general plan in California is, is a required document and it preliminary, primarily revolves around, um, well, it's made up of seven, seven mandated elements. You have the land use, circulation, housing, open space, conservation, noise and safety. And it's the blueprint for long-term development. Um, it's, it is to be reviewed annually, which the city is sometimes done and sometimes not. Um, so we need to, we need to be better about that and, uh, we, and do the review annually. The first one's always the most painful, uh, because you're setting up the template. Um, but after that, it's pretty, it's pretty easy to do the annual review. Um, the housing element is one of the seven mandated elements and it's the only one that has to be state certified. So your how, your, um, uh, general plan, all the other elements were updated in, in May of twenty twenty-three. The housing element was updated in twenty twenty-four, but not certified by the state until this year, earlier this year. Um, that also is required to do annual reporting. And if you don't do that annual reporting, you are subject to, um, not receiving grant funds and some other penalties from the state. So your annual progress report was done this year. Um, as I said, the zoning, the, the planning, general plan gives a broad look of what the city is supposed to look like for a twenty-year period. Then you have the zoning code underneath that, that designates and has more specific information about how to, um, how things are going to be looked, looked at and designed to be in accordance with that, with that, uh, general plan. So, um, it's a set of local regulations that dictates how land can be used within the city. It defines what types of development are allowed in specific areas and sets rules for development standards like building height, size setbacks and other physical characteristics. Um, the zoning code, codes are implemented through the zoning ordinances and maps, which are visibly uh, represent the different zones and their regulations. The zoning code is required in accord, to be in accordance with the general plan. So one thing that's needs to be done is your general plan that was adopted in twenty twenty-three. I don't believe had the follow-up review of your, um, your zoning ordinance to be in accordance. I don't believe that happened. I can't find any record of that happening. So that's another part of why the zoning code needs a wholesale look at. Um, um, because the development of those regulations cannot anticipate all development scenarios. There are processes in the code that allows to accommodate different uses as well as exemptions to the rules. So conditional use permits is one of those. You know, you have someone that wants to come in and make a kind of widget that requires a special type of building that's not covered in the zone. Then, you know, all, all, if it doesn't fit in any category, then that would be subject to a conditional use permit. If you have building that's on a lot that's irregularly shaped or has topography issues or, you know, natural features that are desirable to keep, you can do with a variance and make from those, from those development standards and change your setbacks. So those are, those are tools that, that we use to allow for some flexibility within the, within the development standards in the zoning code. Yes.
How about a temporary use permit?
Yes.
Does that go to us?
Temporary use permits are done administratively. At this point in the, it, the municipal code has them as an administrative. In the, the municipal code has them as an administrative, um, it, it, you know, the, the process is administrative.
I had a question about that as well because, so let's use a hypothetical of having a temporary use permit issued. And in conjunction with that temporary use permit, they also wanted to file their conditional use permit. Why would it go that path instead of starting with the conditional use permit and possibly discussing a variance if things were not? Um, I'm just, I'm looking for kind of like a mapping here of like how it went this way versus this way.
Right. So temporary use permits, if they, if, if a project is only ideally, project comes in and they wanna, they wanna test it to see if it's going to work in this area, if it's gonna function. That's when you would, that's one of the ways you could do a temporary use permit. Another way is if you're in the middle of construction and you don't need a facility, but for a certain amount of time during that construction, that would be a temporary use permit.
Paper permit?
It's a paper permit. Yeah.
And it is ministerially approved by staff. It's not something that comes to the commission.
The way that the municipal code admin, has that administratively processed is ministerial at this point in time. Yes.
Hey, um, I get that part. Okay, going back hypothetically to our discussion earlier on that, uh, property on, um,
Plymouth Highway?
Uh huh.
Hunter Lane?
No, no, not Hunter Lane. No, the one going out of town, the Mizorachas are involved in.
But Highway, yeah.
Okay, is zone commercial? Now, if memory serves you right, commercial is a higher level of zoning than residential.
Yes.
So I don't understand why even though it's zone commercial, they can't get a, a lower conditional use permit without rewriting the whole frickin' code.
Okay, so that's a great question. Um, some jurisdictions are truly hierarchical. Meaning, you, you know, you have your agriculture down here, you have your really low-intensity residential building up to multifamily to low-intensity commercial, all the way up through to manufacturing, right? Um, and, and anything in the lower tiers are allowed. Ione's is hierarchical until you get to, I believe it's, um, transition commercial. Don't quote me on that. I'm, I'm not sure. But I know heavy commercial residential is expressly not allowed. So it stops that hierarchy. And it also, I will say, in a lot of jurisdictions, do not allow residential in a, in an industrial area for obvious reasons, because you don't want industrial and residential cohabitating, so to speak. So, um, that, that's, and it's, your question is the same concern, concern that Commissioner Gephardt had was, which was, you know, it, it doesn't seem to make sense for the city of Ione where we do have a lot of mixed use.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't see why we're going through the time and expense of rewriting the ordinance when a conditional use permit can solve a problem, especially in that neighborhood, because that residential would be conforming to all the other misuse.
To put that, to put, to allow residential with a conditional use permit, we have to amend the zoning ordinance. To, to put that in the table. So it's just a process we have to go through. And it's not just gonna benefit that property. It's all the other properties that have commercial zoning that would like to have the potential to use it as, as residential. And I will say, you get a gold star from the state because, um, it increases the amount of potential housing that you can,
I was in a little bit.
You can do. So it's, it is, there is a benefit to that as well.
Be careful when you do that because you set a precedence. If you give a variance here, very difficult to say, well, you can't have it here.
Perfect segue, perfect segue to findings. That's why findings are important. Because if, if, if you have findings, that, that's, that's the Planning Commission's toolbox, is findings. If you can't make those findings and you can clearly demonstrate for the record that this is not going to work because it's not consistent with this part of the general plan or because it's incompatible with the surrounding land use or that it's a safety issue that's putting the public in jeopardy. If you can make those findings and they're based in fact and you have the supporting information for those findings, then you are not setting precedents.
Right. That's not easy to do.
That's why, that's why when you make findings, when you approve or deny a project, your findings need to be very clear and concise and, and, um, well-crafted. Let's put it that way. Um, you want to, you don't just wanna say, we can make these findings. We can make these findings for these reasons and be able to support that. So that's a great question and, and, um, I, I've gotten that in other jurisdictions before. We don't wanna grant this variance because then everybody's gonna wanna put a carport right into the, up against the property line. And it's like, well, if you can demonstrate that it's not a grant of special privilege because everyone else on the street has the carport all the way up against the property line and that there's not impacting the site distance and it's not this, that and the other, then you can demonstrate that the next one that comes in that can't make the findings, that, that precedent hasn't been set.
Right. You can tell them they're not on a golf cart path.
So I wanna touch on subdivisions a little bit as well. Um, you will be, you know, there's, we had preliminary applications submitted for two large subdivisions in the city of Ione. Those applications were deemed incomplete until such time that they provide the planning department with, um, the requested studies. You know, we requested, and these, these projects are Ringer Ranch and Waterman Road. We, uh, staff has requested traffic studies, noise, air, um, cultural resources, biological, basically all the supporting documentation so that we can prepare an appropriate environmental document for the, for those projects. Um, so these subdivisions may, may or may not be coming to us. I don't know. Um, I haven't heard from the developer in quite some time. Um, so the difference between, uh, there's two different types of maps that are processed in the city. The first one is a parcel map and that's four or fewer lots. And the other one is the subdivision maps, which are five or more. They're processed the same. They're both subject to SEQA environmental review. Um, the, the main difference is that usually with subdivisions, you get, um, development agreements and subdivision improvement agreements. And there's, there's just, uh, more documentation that goes along with the actual conditions of approval and potentially changes to, you know, creation of a specific plan or, or, um, that have specific, yeah, project-specific conditions in it. There's also lot line adjustments or boundary line adjustments. Typically, these do not come to the Planning Commission. These are, they are dealt with ministerially and they're usually just a minor change in a lot line. Say somebody, you know, accidentally built their barn on your property and so you're adjusting that lot line. When they would, do come to the Planning Commission is if there's different zoning on the properties. Because then you have to address that zoning. What is that change? Is it gonna, you know, is it, is it appropriate to change that zoning for that, to accommodate that boundary line adjustment? Um, yes.
I can end up on paragraph, I understand the four or five parcels, but if it's a split two, you know, that's just a lot split. Does that come before the commission?
Yes, that's considered a parcel map.
Oh, okay.
So it's, a parcel map is four or less, four or less, and a subdivision is five or more. So yes, they do come. Now, SB nine came in a few years ago that said that, and, that you can, uh, a property owner can split their lot for residential purposes. So if you have a lot that's size-wise can, can be split, they can do it ministerially. But there are rules. They have to, they have to be restricted to, they have to be the primary residence for at least three years. Now the state's trying to get rid of that rule so that, that, so that people can come in and split their lots and, and create more housing. There are issues with that in terms of, um, can we, can the city adequately provide services? So, you know, water and wastewater being the most pertinent. Um, and there are ways to get around it, but for the most part, there, there are, there will be times when possibly we could be subject to an SB nine split that wouldn't come to the Planning Commission. Um, let's see, what else do I wanna cover tonight? California Environmental Quality Act. Most of you familiar with it. Most people in California are. It was created in nineteen seventy and the idea of the California Environmental Quality Act was to provide decision-makers with information. The, the decisions that are being made have impacts to the environment. Are those impacts, um, significant? And if they are, is there enough public benefit that outweigh the, the impacts that are being caused? Um, so there's, there's different levels of review. Um, we covered one today, which was a categorical exemption. So some projects that are small, that, you know, from a common sense standpoint, you look at it and go, okay, it's a already disturbed piece of property. No trees are being removed. If there are trees being removed, there, there's, they're not of a native species, they're not heritage size, they're, um, or they're damaged. Um, if there's, um, you know, minor alterations to, to a building that's, I mean, not gonna generate more traffic, uh, a huge amount of grading, those all, those all can be done with what's called a categorical exemption. So we, we, we take a look at what's called an initial study and that's a checklist. And, and for any project, we just kinda skim through that checklist and go, okay, do we see any red flags here? Is there anything that stands out that we should look at further? The, the trees for the site plan was a good one. And the contractor did bring an arborist out to, to look at those trees, which I was very happy to hear. Like, um, I was in, you know, told that they were going to be avoided to, you know, those, the, you know, mature trees to be avoided, which is great. But it's always good to have backup from an arborist as to which trees should be removed. So you have that initial study, you do that initial checklist. Um, you either categorically exempt it. There are some statutory exemptions. Um, municipal utilities have a lot of those. If you're replacing a pipeline, those are exempt. Um, if it's, you know, if it's an emergency situation, those are exempt. The school has some exemptions. So those are, those are the exemptions. The next level is, um, a negative declaration, where you go through that checklist a little more thoroughly, provide a little bit more information, maybe have a little bit of studies done to determine that something really isn't gonna cause a problem you, that would require mitigation. And that's called a negative declaration. If there is something that might need mitigation, so for example, if we did do, um, and did propose a negative declaration for the site, for the site plan, say we were removing a bunch of trees, um, then the mitigation would be to make sure that an arborist came out and there would probably be some biological mitigation to make sure that there's no nesting birds and et cetera. Those are, those, so that becomes then a mitigated negative declaration. If there's any possibility for a significant and potentially unavoidable impact, you are required by state law to prepare an environmental impact report. Because you can't approve a project with a significant unavoidable impact without what's doing called a statement of overriding considerations. So, and that's that balance of environment to public benefit. So those are the different levels. Um, you know, staff will make a recommendation. If there's questions or comments, I'm always welcome, you know, I always welcome questions and comments to, to respond to. If, if there's more information needed, I'm always open to getting more information to the planning commissioners. Um, because that's sequels, that's what SEQA is intended for, was just the decision-makers having more information in front of them so that they can make an informed, the most informed decision. So, um, so that's kind of Planning 101. You got a taste of it tonight. There'll be other projects coming up that I'm sure you will have procedural questions on. Um, and I, I think, uh, you know, if you have any questions in the meantime, please let me know.
I appreciate it. Um, no, absolutely.
I, I wanna thank you for bringing this up and, and asking it, did it be on the agenda, especially, especially because we have two new planning commissioners. Welcome aboard, you guys. And, um, um, yeah.
Thank you for the training session.
You're welcome.
Yeah, it's been a minute since we had any, um, I think maybe twenty twenty-one or something was the last time we'd done anything. So I appreciate it. I wanted to definitely make sure our new commissioners felt like we were kind of all operating within the same page. Um, Planning Commissioner reports. Do we have reports? The only thing I wanted to mention, and it's not necessarily Planning Commission, but it is for a city of Ione because there is, um, sort of an announcement that I wanna make, which is, um, regarding, um, on Sunday, August seventeenth, um, Casey Wilkinson, her son Logan, he is turning thirteen years old. And in two thousand twenty-four, Logan had a typical injury, which led to a diagnosis of a rare and aggressive form of brain cancer. And so this is a birthday in which Logan is turning thirteen years old. They've made some really great, um, treatment advancements through the, uh, UC San Francisco Medical Center. And we want to show support for Logan and his family. And there is a, uh, for his birthday at eleven AM on Sunday, August seventeenth, at forty-seven eighty-nine Spyglass, they're inviting the community to go by and balloons or signs. There is a group that is gathering at ten forty-five at the Golf Course Clubhouse in order to kind of, you know, do a, a parade concept. But, um, yeah, Logan is enduring treatment and we just wanna make sure that, that we are supporting him and, and acknowledging that. And I wanted to take my time today to do that. So that is Sunday, August seventeenth, um, eleven AM forty-seven eighty-nine and just to, to stop by. So that was my report. Um, future agenda items, I think we've covered a few things as far as future agenda items over the weekend and all that.
I wanna, yeah, sure. I, there has not been a lot of activity, planning activity. You and I talked about this last time we met. There really hasn't been a lot of activity. Um, but it doesn't mean that I'm not doing anything. Um, there have been a, a, some projects that have been difficult to navigate, um, that have taken some time. Um, we have a new city, city attorney that we're kinda getting used to the language back and forth with. Um, and there will be, there, there's not, again, a lot of projects in the horizon, but there are those updates to the zoning code and I will start bringing those to you. I would like to present them probably in some chunks in a workshop-type setting and then do a public hearing on all of them at one time.
One of, one of the things I'd like to see, I, I hope I don't offend anybody. The last time I saw our zoning, but I've been involved in this in other places in another lifetime, so I know how it works. I could not make heads or tails out of our zoning. It made absolutely no sense to me.
Okay, can you?
So I, maybe we just need to look at how that zoning map lays out. Most of the places that I've done, white-type zones are pretty much clustered in the same place.
Yeah.
See spotty stuff all over.
Wel- welcome to, um, the mother lode. Here, here's.
Stay that way.
Oh, I know, but the, the, the problem is, is that you have, in, in most of these cities in the, in the, in the mother lode area, you have, um, a lot of spotty zoning, essentially, where you have little pockets of one or two businesses, you know, so a business would, would set down roots and then a couple houses would build up around it. So then you have commercials surrounded by a couple houses. And then, you know, or a boarding house that then turned into a restaurant that has houses around it. So, so you get this kind of spot zoning and so, and this was, I mean, of course, these uses all predate zoning. Right. The requirement for zoning. So in a lot of these places, when zoning was forced upon the jurisdictions, they just asked people what they wanted to be zoned. And of course, people wanna be zoned commercial because they, they're, you know, they think the property is worth.
You can deal with that while I'm making a hodgepodge.
I, I understand that and I have worked in jurisdictions where we effectively. I, I understand that and I have worked in jurisdictions where we effectively downzoned four hundred pieces of property in, in an attempt to reduce that hodgepodge. But it's, it takes a lot of education and it takes a lot of time to do that. And a lot of public trust.
I believe that. I think, I think it can be done. I think it can be done and make, make the public happy.
I think priority number one for me right now.
I don't see how you plan anything with the way our zoning is.
Well, I did want to mention, just in light of everything that you, we, we've had some more discussion about the M one, M two, and I, I do think that that brought up some additional questions because there's things that are perceivably authorized within that zoning that would be subject to a ministerial approval. I would like to say, I, I think we do need to take a look at that and be confident that we're comfortable with ministerial approvals in those areas within what is being authorized. I did appreciate you had in here as well that if there's a conflict between the zoning and the general plan, it will defer to the general plan. And so this is where I just really want to make sure as a commission, as a planner, as a city, we're, we're just really all working in unison with what the intention and, and the goals are. Because, yeah.
That's through Patty's petition for her property. When she made that petition, I'm sitting there thinking, why the hell does she have to go through this? Because somebody drew a little line and called the fat? In the middle of all bunch of other stuff like that? It's like, it made no sense to me.
And as I keep.
Show me that map and I says, wow.
Yeah, but once it's that way, it takes time to undo it. And it takes time to make these changes. I mean, so.
Eat that, that, that five thousand pound elephant one bite at a time, but you have.
That's exactly right.
Take in the ground and start somewhere.
Yep. So, and, and my priority is, is immediately dealing with some of these conflicts. Janice, the city clerk and I have had significant issues getting the DeVore map that you approved. The, the, a couple of boundary line adjustments recorded with the county because the county is saying your code is conflicting.
We've had this come up, yeah.
So there's, there's, that's my, my priority number one is to get all these done and I, and I am working on them. So.
Understand. Yeah. One other thing and then I'll, I'll get off my soapbox. The other thing, and I don't know where, where this goes, but at some point in time, I don't know if this is a planning commission issue, if it is a city council issue, whatever it is. We need to seriously look at bypass. This is just drives me crazy to see the things that go down Main Street. And we just gotta keep going.
I have. That brings up another issue. So I have been attending the Amador County Transportation Commission Technical Advisory Committee meetings where we had the call for projects. Gone are the days of bypass projects is the bottom line in Amador County. The Pine Grove, big, big projects that require right away acquisition, environmental clearance, massive coordination with, with Caltrans, those projects are no longer palatable to our board of supervisors or to the to the Transportation Commission, which is predominantly the board supervisors.
Those trucks run somebody over and see how that works.
So what they've done instead is that their, the call for projects is for shoulder to shoulder projects, repaving, safety projects, again, that are all within current right of way. Unless the city ponies up money to do the environmental and the design and the right of way acquisition. If they're shovel ready projects, then they'll be considered for funding. It all comes down to money. And so the city of Ione had this big Y risk project, right, which was a bypass and for a lot of reasons that didn't get, didn't ever get passed.
That was thirty years ago. They haven't.
Well, no, it was newer than that. And, and it was between that project and the Pine Grove corridor improvement projects and the, the, the commission went with the corridor improvements. You know, for a lot of reasons. And some of it was that Ione couldn't couldn't package together a non controversial plan. That is the bottom line.
You know, as far as that, just out of curiosity, because we didn't have the expertise or we couldn't agree on it or?
No, there was a lot of different, there's a lot of disagreement about what, what was going to be best.
You know, as far as.
Agree with that. We, we had a meeting in July about this and I, I said, you need, we need to go to the commission with this because I don't think we're all on the same page with that. And so I, I wanted to have this conversation. I appreciate it, Susan, because I do think that this, this was, I know Mr. Lee was not, was taken aback when he heard that too as well about the bypass project just being, nope, it's just done now. You just missed the opportunity and it's done. And so I really was taken aback hearing that and really wanting to ensure that first and foremost, that never happens again, that we wind up investing in a pathway and, and this feedback that we weren't ready. I, I don't know where that's coming from because I, I know we've sat here, you know, at least Mark and I and, and addressed.
I, I've been on the tax since its inception, which was well, twenty some odd years ago.
The challenge I'm finding is that we, we don't necessarily have, which present company accepted, we don't necessarily have representation and.
You didn't. And that was a big problem. You did have the city engineer at the time was actually good and he was on it. But he couldn't, he, the idea wasn't cohesive enough and there wasn't enough support from the city for the plan. That was, that was the take.
The story. Yeah.
Yeah, that was the take. So.
There were a couple of things too. There were, I mean, there were issues with the, the last plan that was put forward because there were, you know, ninety degree angles, this and that. And I mean, I, I checked it out on my odometer. It was going to be longer for the trucks to take the bypass than it would be to go through town. And as I understood, you couldn't force them to. And besides that.
It, it just, it all depends on if you can relinquish.
See that's, but it's so. There are the conditions where you can, but that's a question. And also Ione is a Better Creek, Jackson, Amador City, the bypasses back when they could do them were pretty straightforward. But our state highways make an X through the middle of town. You know, it just, everything gets more complicated.
But there's something, there's something that everybody's overlooking that geographically, the, the, the rockery out here, okay? No matter, I don't care if you have a, a bypass, if you had a viaduct that went over, over the town. But as long as that business is out there, we're going to be, it's going to be impacted. We're, we're going to have the traffic. There's no two ways about it. You know, I mean, I, there's just no way that, that they're going to leave that, that, that facility and not have to go, go through our town somewhere, whether it be residential or down Main Street or what have you. It's, it, it is what it is. You know?
Well, this is why we need to be paying attention to our.
Get a bypass and then you get to stay.
So.
Turn over your seat. Well, this. Back to you and then you set a weight limit on what can go through those streets.
So what we've done is, so what the, the Amador County Transportation Commission has created in their regional transportation plan, a pri, a list of projects. And they're not necessarily prioritized, but if you are in the tier one list, then your projects, if you are ready to move forward with them, you can request funding for it. We don't have any projects on that list because none of our projects were qualified for the list because they weren't shoulder to shoulder. So we still did put in an application. Debbie Mackey worked on that for the roads leading up to the junior high school. Because that's one of the qualifications that it has to be somewhat of a, a regional road. You have to demonstrate that there's regional significance and that the pavement's poor and that there's potentially safety issues. All of that qualifies, I felt. So there, there, we did submit that and tomorrow is another tack meeting. I can't attend that. Debbie will be there. I confirmed with her today that she'll be there tomorrow to find out what the preliminary take is on that. But it will require the Transportation Commission to not just accept the project, but to add it to the tiered list. And that's, I, I think it's highly unlikely, but as I've said in the past, we have to start asking.
Have to start asking.
You gotta take that alpha one bite at a time. Is that meeting open to the public or is that something that you have to?
Yeah, it, it is. I, I don't think you'll find it very.
I'm polite, but I have to.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it is, it is open. If you go to the Amador County Transportation Commission website, there'll be a link there and you can zoom in. So.
All right. Just, you know, talking about future things and I don't know what we can do about it, but historically I've been on Laffco, for example, and I think we need a bigger municipal footprint in Laffco, not just city of Ione, but all the corporate areas because it's the unincorporated county that's dominating everything and their financial resources are stronger because they've managed to make all the retail businesses in unincorporated areas for the most part. Secondly, I think we need to look into expansion of our state limits and our, especially our sphere of influence. I think we're really hamstrung on what we can control and how we can manage our own, our community because you know, we're stuck in this small footprint.
Staff has had discussions about getting the triangle to the south here that includes US mine and, and.
Stuff in about a year and a half.
And along, along with that, we need, we need business. We need business.
We need room for businesses and work, you know. Every, every crossroad in the nation has got a Dollar General except Ione. I mean, I've been road trips across the middle of nowhere and here there's two crossroads, fifty miles and there's a Dollar General with fifty cars in the parking lot. Yeah, but my point is that we don't have, if we had a serious commercial, you know, opportunity aside from the thirteen acres in front of the golf course, where would we put a major? A major, you know, development. We're, we're, we're hamstrung.
We also need a.
Doesn't belong to us.
You know, you know.
We also lost the hammer to have it done properly.
Another thing too.
Yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm going through, I'm going through something with my wife. She's very ill. And, and we have no, in, in, in the whole county, there's Kit Carson. That's it.
Right.
Okay.
Ever been there?
Yeah, unfortunately, and it's, 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 you know, and you see where my wife is in, in Elk Grove, which we're getting out of there on, on Thursday.
Sure.
You know, but it's, you know, we need, we need the, the Kaiser, the Kaiser, I, I have to drive to Folsom to get a blood test. You know?
I'd love to, I'd love to see us have a drop in clinic.
You know, and, and there's, there's so many, so many things that, that, that we need, we need here. And that's why I keep, that's why I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm just going to say this and no more is we, the, the, the developers have, have ripped us off. We should have never, never extended that, that, that this last deal that should have been renegotiated.
The developers didn't rip us off. Our people renegotiated.
Our city council ripped them off.
You know, you know what I'm, you know what I mean? We let the developers do it, whatever. Anyway.
You're losing counsel. Okay.
We, I've got a.
Need a motion to adjourn?
No, we're gonna adjourn on that note. No, I know. I got a school starting tomorrow. So no, I, I appreciate, this was a robust meeting today. I appreciate everyone's comments. No, this is good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan, I appreciate all of your time. How'd you like your first meeting?
Oh, this, this go around.
This go around.
That's good. Less, more interesting than I remember. I was on for six year before, I'm a captain for six.
Oh, right, right, right.
So, so this time I thought, well, I, I've got more time now. I'm about, I'm retired. I can, you know, like can dig into things after questions.
Right.
You know, I, I thought it was more interesting than, than it was my first go around. I did, I thought it was interesting.
I appreciate that. I, I, you know, I, I appreciate it and I, I do want, you know, the engagement and I thought you guys all have really. But I appreciate it because, you know, we are all on the same page and we want more development. We want more growth.
They want to pay for all their bullshit.
They'll propose their way.
Yeah.
Expect your community because of, you know, traffic and having. But, but you've got, you've got three, four each, this and they all zigzag through Ione.
You have to think about what we want to do. And I, my that is, that's why we, we need to pay attention to what is, because these things are going to have ministerial approvals and they're going to be done.